On behalf of Washington Township Presidents Council, I would like to warmly welcome you all to this event. I am Danielle Moore, co-president of the Washington Township Presidents Council, and I am joined by my fellow co-president, Susan LaPresty. We appreciate your presence and anticipate your positive and pleasant discussion with all of you. Please treat each other with kindness and respect. Thank you again for attending tonight.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Suber, and I would like to welcome you to the candidates forum on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Burlington County and the Washington Township Presidents Council. I will be your moderator for this evening. I am on the Executive Board of the League of Women Voters of Burlington County, and I am joined this evening by fellow League members Susan Ilian, who is going to be your timekeeper, and Bobby Gentry, who will be vetting your questions this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. That means that we never support or oppose individual candidates or political parties for any of the elected offices. The League of Women Voters welcomes all adult citizens, women and men, and students as young as 16 years old to support our mission. Membership in the League provides opportunities to be involved in the political process without running for an office or being active in a political party. For example, keeping time and monitoring forums are rewarding experiences. We'll even train you. Registering high school students and college students to vote is inspirational. Attending a council meeting, wearing a badge, puts officials on notice that the League is watching. If any of these sound interesting to you and you would like to join us, please log on to l w v n j dot org and become a member. We want to remind you that you can vote three ways in the state of New Jersey for the upcoming general election. In-person early voting, that option enables you to enable all registered voters to cast their vote in person using voting machines during a nine-day period prior to the election day. You can choose when you want to vote in person and when it's convenient to you and your schedule. In Gloucester County, five in-person voting locations will be open from Saturday, October 25th through Sunday, November 2nd. Hours are Monday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. No appointment is necessary, and you can vote at any of those locations so long as you are registered in Gloucester County. Vote by mail. Registered voters can apply for a vote-by-mail ballot by following the instructions found on vote njgov or contacting their county clerk. The deadline for applying for vote by mail is October 29th. If you apply by mail, the deadline for applying by mail if you go in person to the county election board is November 4th. There are 12 drop-off boxes throughout Gloucester County, including one in Washington Township, that are available 24 hours through the close of polls for receiving vote-by-mail ballots. Remember, if you decide to vote by mail ballot, you cannot return that ballot at the early voting locations or at the election on the election day. And the last of the three ways. You can go to the polls on election day, vote in person at your polling place from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. on election day, which is November 4th. Okay, moving on to tonight's forum and format, I wish to reiterate that the League of Women Voters is nonpartisan. Also, it is the League's policy that moderators must not be eligible to vote in the election that they're moderating. And therefore, we have no personal interest in this outcome. I live in Mount Laurel. Susan lives, our timekeeper, lives in Voorhees, and Bobby lives in Southampton. I will now review the basic structure of this evening's forum. The timekeeper, Susan, will give a 15-second warning by holding up the yellow card. She will signal that the response time is up by showing the next card, which is the red card. I will allow the candidate to briefly finish the sentence. Please come quickly to the conclusion when the time is out. Time cannot be banked or given to another candidate. In this election, we have a total of seven candidates, all of whom are vying for three spots, each with a three-term limit. Two of the candidates are incumbents. Six of the seven candidates have joined us this evening. The forum will begin with an opening statement from all of the candidates based on the orders that they chose and when they chose what numbers they're going to have, which was the pink card. At the end, you will then get questions that have been submitted from the audience. Then at the end, you will have a closing statement from candidates in the order that you got in the white card. I will remind all candidates to stick with the issues relevant to the office of the Board of Education and not bring in personal matters or other matters unrelated to the office that you're running for. We're going to begin with the opening statements. The candidates will speak in random order. They will have 60 seconds with a 15-second warning. We're going to begin this evening with one of the candidates that was not here. I will be reading her opening statement. Connie Baker. "I am sorry I cannot participate in tonight's meeting conducted by the League of Women Voters. Please understand because I am dealing with the recent loss of my husband. I have served on the board for the past several years, and I am a committed board member, devoting many hours, attending meetings, reviewing documents, and researching schools-related topics and issues. If you watch the board meetings or go back and forth and watch them on your YouTube, you will find me respectfully voting consistently to be financially responsible and student-centered. I am to foster transparency. I consistently questioned and openly sought answers to all of the witnesses. Serving on the board has been a learning curve. I was only able to scratch the surface of what really goes on in the district. I accomplished the needed directions to address how we can provide our students with the best education by supporting those who are directly involved with our students day in and day out. Their lies with our teachers and support staff. I, along with other board members, set the bar at a level to address competitiveness, salaries, and benefits in order to attract and retain committed staff whose sole purpose is to deliver equality education and to be there for all students on a daily basis. I believe that staff morale is tremendously important because it is equally as good just for the adults and for the kids. Our students reap the benefits of an adult wanting to go above and beyond because they know they are respected and appreciated. I am seeking another term. Serving on the board, I will gain knowledge that I must insist and demand data showing how our district is addressing student achievement. I believe we need to conduct a full, exhaustive assessment of staff and programs to craft a long-range strategic financial plan that could be sustained in the future. I will address the importance of district leadership that encompasses and promotes a school climate of trust and support to augment students' staff success. Please feel free to contact me personally about our concerns related to my tenure on the board or your goals for the board in my term. My cell is 609-922-696760, or you can email me at connie.baker@verizon.net. I welcome with gratitude, and I seek your endorsement on November 4th by voting for me to represent you on the school board. Thank you, Connie Baker." Our next opening statement will be done by Brandy Williams.
I'm going to remember to talk into the mic this year. I didn't want to be first. All right, I'm running for the board because I'm extremely passionate about our community, and I'm a big believer in accept their change. And I cannot accept the way things are going. I'm worried about our future, so I would like to be part of the change. And I feel like I would be great for that. If anyone that's had the opportunity to speak with me or me to speak with you, you would know how passionate I am about our community. I love it, and I want it to thrive. I would want nothing more than, if I were to get elected a year from now, people to say, "Oh, my God, we see such a difference." I want our parents to believe in the board again. I want them to feel comfortable, to speak their minds, and to have an open dialogue, to be able to come up with common grounds. So please, vote for me.
Next person, Vince Smith.
Thank you. My name is Vince Smith. I'm an almost 20-year resident of Washington Township.
Mr. Smith, I'm going to interrupt for one minute. Make sure that you're talking into the microphone and you're talking loud. Use your teacher voices.
There you go. Hopefully, that's a little better. I'll start again. My name is Vince Smith. I'm an almost 20-year resident of Washington Township. I'm quite familiar with how municipal government works. I've been practicing law for close to 30 years now. I was approached and asked to consider running for the school board for various reasons. In that, I took a tour of local school districts and other boards of ed to see how they handle things. And it's clear that we really need accountability, integrity, and transparency in our Board of Ed to our parents and to our students. We must remember that the number-one issue is creating a healthy environment for our kids to adequately learn and come out successful. And I am seeking your vote. Thank you.
James Masadi.
Good evening. James Masadi, I have been a resident of Washington Township for about 15 years. I want to start off thanking the League of Women Voters, the president's organization, and send my condolences to Connie on her recent loss. I started getting involved in the school district. My daughter is in first grade at her fill, and I had the opportunity to serve on a committee, taking a look at our budget. And academically, I have a degree in international studies. I have a certificate in paralegal studies. I spent 15 years in corporate America, leading corporate supply chains in small to large organizations. And in 2023, I bought my first accounting firm. And so now I own an accounting firm. And so through all of that, I have experienced leading teams. I have experienced leading budgets, looking at financials. And really, one of the core things that I want to focus on is not only bringing kindness and respect to the leadership of what is going on in this board, but also try to build a five-year financial projection.
Terri Schechter.
Hello. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Presidents Council, district staff, fellow candidates, and audience members here tonight. I'm Terri Schechter, a mom of three, a community volunteer, and someone who believes really deeply in public service and that we really need to put our kids first. I'm running for the Board of Education because our schools deserve steady, transparent leadership, leadership that listens, plans responsibly, and serves the entire community. In my career, I've managed budgets, projects, partnerships that have all required tough decisions and clear communication. As president of the library board, I've seen what's possible when collaboration and accountability come together. And that's exactly the kind of leadership I plan to bring to the school board. I'm not running to be the loudest voice in the room. I'm running to make sure every voice has the opportunity to be heard. Because when we work together, we can really create the stability, trust, and vision that our students and families deserve.
Shawne Lindsay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shawne Lindsay. I'm a 20-year resident of Washington Township. I've been on the board before. I've seen how it works, and we have a broken system right now. One of my goals is to be, obviously like everyone else, I want to be transparent. I want to hold people accountable for their actions. And also, I want to bring public trust back. It's been eviscerated. And quite frankly, without the trust of the public, until the system gets fixed, we're going to be spinning our wheels in the mud. So I'm hoping with your vote and your confidence in me that I will be able to bring public trust, integrity, and accountability back to this board. Thank you.
And last person, Julie.
Hi, I'm Julie. I'm a mom of Aaron, who is 20 next week, Stephen, who is 17, and Kevin Yankanich, who is 15, who's at the high school. Stephen is at GCIT. I have been on the board for almost a year this time. I was on the board from 2016 to 2021. One of the things I'm proudest of when I was on the board then is that we never raised taxes even above the 2% cap. So I started to see some financial things that were concerning and also a movement away from academics. I'm an educator. I have two master's degrees, and I'm working on a doctoral degree, and I'm an English professor. So I really think my focus is always 100% academic success for students, especially in 2025, reducing technology in that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we come to the question-and-answer portion of the forum. I have used a random order to select who will speak first on the different questions. You will have at least 10 to 12 questions that you will be answering this evening. Some have been submitted by the Washington Township residents, and some have been chosen by the council. Candidates will be called on a random order using a sequence that I prepared in advance. My order is different from the order that you're sitting at the counter. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question with a 15-second warning. The first person will be, I'll read the question first for the first person. Moving forward, the middle school sports funding has been changed. How would you fund middle school sports? And we're going to start with Shawne Lindsay.
Love it. It's pretty simple. We have to find a way to work it into the budget. I know that they were cut, and then apparently they came back. There's no reason that co-curricular should be cut at all. Not to support, and I'm going to say controversial. Shouldn't be cut to support staff. Shouldn't be cut to support administration. We are here to do a job, which is to keep the kids in co-curriculars and sports. So I don't care how we have to do it this year, but we do need to find a way to allocate money to go back into these sports. I love the fact that the community reached out and they supported the clubs that were cut. I don't think that that's something that should be a burden on the community. It should be, because it's a school program. It should be funded by the school budget. So we will do everything in our power to try to find that money in the budget to make that happen.
Okay. Terri Schiphol is the next person.
So unfortunately, I don't have, you know, an action plan of how we can save every person's individual co-curricular activity. But what I can tell you is that cuts aren't part of a fiscally responsible plan. We need a long-term plan to understand how we can start bringing things back to our schools, in the middle schools, and everywhere. I think we need to set those firm goals and start really working towards not only ensuring that all our resources are going to support things that are improving our children's academics, but also ensuring that we are able to maintain those going forward. So we don't have these reactive cuts in the moment to the budget. Thank you.
Brandy Williams.
First and foremost, nothing with our children should be cut. This is what we're here for. Our kids should always come first. Also, I'm a strong believer in that kids need sports or some sort of activity after school keeps them out of trouble. Like Terri said, I don't have a plan right now. I need to be on the board. But I do plan on going into the budget and really looking through it with a fine-tooth comb. Like, I want to sit with the VA and ask questions. I want to find, there has to be money somewheres. Even if it's looking for different vendors to save a dollar here, that all adds up. So my goal is to really look and see where we could bring money in and to actually go. We have businesses. We have a hospital. We have Inspira. Why can't we just ask them to also maybe come up with something? And there's other districts that are close by that are thriving. We can collaborate with them and see what they're doing right. But the last thing I would ever do is to cut anything for kids. It's not fair.
Okay. James Mascotti.
So it's really hard to say that we're not going to cut one thing versus another when almost every single dollar that is in the budget for this school district in some way or another is going to impact children. So one of the things that really is going to impact that is listening and engaging with the community to understand what the priorities are. I think before I can say what the right answer is, is needing to, as a board, I think we need to get more community members involved in whether it's our standing committees or creating more ad hoc committees so that when we're building our five-year financial projection, we are identifying what, as a community and as a district, we want to protect and what, again, we never want to cut anything. But at the end of the day, sitting up here in these seats, you at times have to make difficult decisions. And our job is to make sure that we're making the best difficult decisions with the best information that we can that are aligned with the community's desires.
Julie Kosimsky. Excuse me.
Well, I'm an incumbent, so I was part of those conversations. And there was a lot more cut in the budget when it was presented to us than we ever thought possible. Some of those things were brought back thanks to the work of our community members, particularly our high school principal. To bring back middle school sports, it would cost about $26,000. And that might not sound like a lot in a $170 million budget, but it is a lot. Every single dollar is a lot. And so, but that said, you do have to make difficult decisions here. If I had $26,000, and someone told me tomorrow, "You can bring back middle school sports," or "You can bring back another IT person so that the teachers can get their work requests on," I probably, you know, you have to make that decision. Do we want teachers' projectors working properly and their classroom materials? Or, you know, do we want to bring back middle school sports? Those are tough decisions. I'd love to bring back middle school sports, but instruction is the number-one goal. So 26K if anybody wants to donate it to bring back middle school sports. Shameless plug.
Okay. Vince Smith.
Thank you. I have to say, the sports and the clubs are necessary. We have to find a way to pay for those. Now, how we pay for them is a different story. Can we find the money within the budget? Yes. But we also need to reach out with creative ideas. And I think we've seen that in some of the recent board meetings with outside businesses coming up and kicking forward some money to keep open some of these clubs. And that's important, and I think we need to do even more of that. I have a daughter in a system. She's involved in some of the outside curricular activities, which is very important for children. The sports is important for children. We have to engage these children both in school and outside of school. It helps keep these kids academically on track because they can't participate in some of these clubs if their academics aren't kept up. Thank you.
Thank you. Second question. Some high schools are requiring paid admission for the spectators, the parents, and the students. Where should these funds be allocated to? And we're going to start with Terri.
That's a great question. I have not considered. I believe the current football fees are being used to support those programs and bring back some of those co-curriculars and activities, which I think aligns and makes sense. And again, I think it is part of an overall strategy and plan of how we're going to not just rely on state and federal funding, but become more self-reliant where we can by bringing in those revenue streams, whether it's from donations or local businesses. So I think how it's working now seems appropriate. If there's a way to use those revenues to support other areas, I think we should do so.
Okay. Vince Smith.
On this issue, I think it's important that we go ahead and try to limit, especially to the students that are charging fees to the games. But as for parents and other stuff like that, I don't see a big problem with it. I think it's going to actually help fund the actual sports programs and could even help fund some of the extracurricular activities that don't have huge spectators. Thank you.
Julie.
Excuse me. If you go to a varsity football game in any other township, they're charging and have been for years. We just started charging. We make between $6,000 and $10,000 a game. So if you do the math on how many home games we have, that's a decent amount of money. But when you have what's called an enterprise account, when you have an enterprise account like that, the money has to go right back into what you're making the money off of. So that money does have to go right back into athletics. And it can't go to the middle school athletics. It has to go to the high school athletics. So I absolutely think we should be charging for the football games. We get a ton of people at the games, and to make $10,000 in two hours, I think it's low-hanging fruit. So I definitely support it.
Brandy.
I too do support it. I think we can even cash in even more is why aren't we selling more like coffees and coffee station? And that way, we could also get special ed kids involved as well. So I do support it, and Julie already answered where the money would go. So what I was going to say is that I think the money should stay going back into the sports itself so the parents also feel that they can trust where the money is, using it for other areas.
Okay. Shawne.
I'm just going to echo pretty much what everybody else has said. I agree that the money that you gain from whatever sporting event you go to, it does go back into that sporting event because, again, it does help offset the costs of, you know, I'm not specific on it, but jerseys, footballs, turf maintenance, you know, painting the goalposts, all that kind of stuff. So that So, that would help to go reinvest and to keep our facilities as they are. And again, just finding a way to, you know, find the money to keep the other sports that aren't as, or that you don't need to pay a fee to get into, find a way to, you know, bring those programs back. I know it's going to be tough, but that's one of the things we have to do.
Okay. Lastly, James.
I have the benefit of going last and hearing all the right answers, so. That's the, that's the right strategy there. So, my, my initial answer, before I found out the right answer from Julie, was I serve on the board of a, of a nonprofit. And we, my first year on the board took an initiative to identify how we could broaden the definition of what was in our restricted funds. As an organization, the more funds that you have in restricted use, it really kind of hamstrings your ability to make decisions. And so, while it all goes into the enterprise funds and must go back into those programs, you know, the, to whatever extent that we can broaden the definition of where those are, where they're going, the better off it is. I can tell you 20 years ago, when I was in high school as a student, I had to pay to go to our football games. When I came, when I first got involved in township here and I learned that our games were free to go to, I was flabbergasted that we were having a budget issue and that wasn't something that had already been done. So, I'm glad to see we did it, but thank you.
Okay. We're going to start with Ben. The question is, what is your experience with strategic planning?
I am a business owner. I am a managing partner at a law firm. I own a real estate company. Strategic planning is vitally important. We have to have yearly goals, five-year goals and 10-year goals. The budget right now is very challenging. The revenues are challenging. State aid has been falling. The number of students attending has fallen significantly in the last 15 years. That affects how much we receive in state aid. But we have to make sure that we can have five-year plans and 10-year plans. Whether those are not, they're reached or not, we can adjust those every year. But, I mean, it's right now, it's my understanding, we have nothing planned for any school projects or building or any other activities, which is vitally necessary and is coming due sooner or later, probably more sooner than later. Thank you.
Randy, question to you.
Can you just repeat that for me, please?
Certainly. The question is, what is your experience with strategic planning?
I too am a small business owner, so I like to set goals, and I think that's very important, is that there should always be goals and accountability. That's just plain and simple.
Okay. Sean.
I'll be honest, I'm probably one of the few up here. I don't have a lot of experience with strategic planning. I'm not a small business owner. I'm not a CEO of any company. The only planning I've done is planning work for, you know, for a group of guys on my job site, five, six, seven days down the road. Being able to keep those guys busy, to me, that's my version of strategic planning, you know, getting guys that, you know, in my industry, that can pull wire, that can, you know, that can set pipe up, that can set conduit racks, that can put up disconnects. You know, to me, my strategic planning is, okay, so for the next five days, how am I going to keep seven guys working instead of having seven guys sit on their hands waiting for me to tell them what to do? So, in my, in that regard, that's my experience.
Okay. James.
I'm a big reader, and there's a book I read a long time ago called Traction by a gentleman named Gino Wickman. And in the business world, it's a reasonably popular book amongst small business owners. And it was very eye-opening to me because it talks about the importance of having a 10-year plan, a five-year plan, one-year goals, and having 90-day goals that support those one-year goals. And so, that's the framework by which I do my strategic planning. But part of that strategic planning isn't just financial in nature. It's also the culture. It's the environment. It's the why and the how that you're going to accomplish the what. And so, I think that there's, you know, that's the framework. I've used it in corporate worlds, I've used it in my own businesses, and I think that there's a lot of benefit in understanding, and anybody who's paid attention to this board knows that we can barely keep track of what's going on the next 90 days. So, when you try to build a strategic plan, you also need to be realistic about what you can do in that 90-day window.
Julie.
I've worked on strategic plans at work several times. It's called our accreditation process. But years ago, when I was on the board, we did a strategic plan through a company. There are a lot of companies out there that do strategic planning and superintendent search. So, we used one of those companies. I would never do that again. I would use New Jersey School Boards Association. They do strategic planning. But they interviewed every possible stakeholder. It was, it was great. And then COVID came, and then we kind of had some new leadership and things like that, and, and there was never a plan after that. I did try, when I got back on, to establish goals, which we just did last month, because I think that you have to know what the mission is. If it's not mission critical, then we don't focus on it. That's the only way you can deal with what we need to do. We need to get that from the superintendent, you know, what is your plan? What are, what is your strategic plan for the district and how are we going to implement that? Because there are nine people and we all go to shop, right? And people come up to you and say, what about this and what about that? And it's like, we have to stay focused on these things that we're trying to accomplish.
Lastly, Terry.
Thank you. I've had the opportunity, both in my professional career, to build strategic plans as a insurance consultant, as well as with local governance. So, one of the things I'm really proud at, proud about of my time as serving on the library board is implementing a strategic plan. So, we worked to find the right partners, consultant to design, build it out. It involved a lot of working with the community, getting surveys, so that we could really build the firm roadmap of what, how we wanted to grow the library. A really important part of setting those goals, right, is the action plan and being able to measure the success of that plan. We just had a board meeting tonight where we looked at a great Excel sheet, it's very colorful, of all the items and progress we've made where we've exceeded our goals. So, I think it's really important. I'm glad the board has approved some goals and working towards a strategic plan, but those long-term five years are really essential to making sure that you're making progress in the right areas and able to measure and firm what's happening.
Okay. James, we're going to start with you. This question is, with the dismantling of the federal Department of Education, specifically the Office of Special Education, how would you protect our students with IEPs and 504s and other special needs programs?
So, to start off with, last night at the board meeting, Dr. Hibbs made it pretty clear that as of right now, we've gotten no indications at all from anybody in local state government that our special education programs are at any risk of losing funding. So, that's to start off with what I do know. What I also know is that I don't have a special education child. And I, you know, see from a distance the things that parents who have children with special needs have to go through. I hear some of it. My wife's a second grade teacher down in Franklin Township and has taught in inclusion classrooms. So, as a parent of a non-special education student, we need to make sure that the students who have the greatest needs are being prioritized and taken care of. As a parent, for somebody who doesn't need that, if that means I have to shoulder additional burden for those students to get the support they need, that's something that I, as a parent, am willing to do. And I think as a district, we should consider that.
Terry is the next person.
Thank you. Agree, there's no immediate danger to funding our, the idea kids from the federal government. I think it's more important now than ever, not only, right, the baseline is to be compliant for our students and for our teachers, right, to make sure that they're in ratio and having the appropriate support that they need. I think that we need to proactively ensure that as much as we can protect the most vulnerable students in our district, we are doing so. I see the signs. I think that's where the concern and the question is coming from, about the federal government not supporting the education system as it should be. And I think public education, and especially at special education students, need to be protected at all costs.
Julie.
So, I, I agree. James mentioned our meeting last night where this, this issue came up and we're not in danger of losing any funds this year, but that doesn't mean that next year, we, no districts will be affected this year because our budget's already done. But we did, I wrote a letter to Senator Booker about this, and last night at the meeting, we, we all agreed to send it to him, Senator Kim, and Congressman Norcross, who represents us in District One, just to kind of put them on notice, like the US senators and the US congressmen, that this is, we're really worried this is an issue. Washington Township has a massive amount of special ed students. People move here for our autism program, our special ed department. So, gutting IDEA would bankrupt us, quite frankly, and they need to be aware of that. So, that letter's going out, and I think we just need to consistently keep advocating. I'm vice president of the County School Boards Association, and I'm also on the Board of Directors for New Jersey School Boards. And I can tell you that our legislative arm, whoop, it's over.
Okay. Randy.
Well, I'm glad to hear that special education's not going to be cut this year, but like Julie said, that we are not sure about what's going to happen next year. The biggest thing is that we, as board members, we need to advocate for special ed. We have to go out there and try, if, if it's me just writing up something, then so be it. Contact senators, look for funding, look for grants, like we cannot fall short because it's important to be all-inclusive. It's not just about one student, it's about all of our students.
Ben.
Fortunately, we're not at risk this year of losing any funding for our special ed programs, but as always, there's next year. And we can't count on state funding, we can't count on federal funding for these programs. But it's vitally important that we do find ways to make sure that we do have an inclusive environment for our special ed students and that they're supported in the way they can. My sister was a special education teacher. I've seen, over the years, how we've brought in special education students into our schools so that they're not separated, and it's, it's a game changer. It really is. It's vitally important, and we need to make sure it continues.
Okay. Sean.
Advocacy, I think, is the biggest thing that we can do as a board to support anything, anything involved with special education. I can't really think of anything else other than that. I mean, again, with Ms. Kuzempel sending the letters out to the senators, it sends a message that, hey, there are enough people that are concerned about it in our town that, hey, we hope that we don't lose this funding because it would be detrimental. So, anything else? I mean, advocacy is the biggest thing that I could say that we can do as board members. That is what we are able and capable to do. So, advocacy is number one.
Okay. Randy, what's your opinion regarding the role of parents and their children's education? Do you support policies that strengthen parent involvement in decisions regarding curriculum and reading material?
Absolutely. As a parent, I want to feel like my voice is being heard. We are entrusting the school district with our children. They're our pride and joy. So, yes, I want to make sure that I'm being heard as a parent. And as a board member, I want to hear what the parents want. That's what's the most important. You have to hear what the community is asking for. It's not my job to sit up here and point out, like, do my agenda. It's about our community. So, if majority is that the parents want this type of policy, then the board needs to find a way to make it work and find common ground for everyone.
Okay. Julie.
I think what's always at the heart of that particular question is a policy that came out a couple of years ago. It's like 57, 56, or it was about, you know, whether students, if they were identifying in school, if they were a member of LGBTQ community and the school withholding that information from parents, which I absolutely don't agree with. I think parents need to be part of the conversation. I believe in LGBTQ rights 1,000%. I'll, I'll fight to the death with my, my flag. But I, I do think that parents need to be involved in those discussions, and that needs to happen before the school take any action to change a child's name or anything like that. Just in general, parent involvement is really important at the secondary level. We get a lot of that at the elementary level. I feel like it would be great to have more of that at the secondary level, just in terms of parent involvement. But, thank you.
Terry.
Thanks. So, I agree, I support policies that empower students to be themselves, but it's really essential that we partner with parents and build that trust in community. For me, as it relates to policies and curriculum, it's really important. I think that there is a lot of nuance and to start and build relationships and trust at, starting with the classroom teacher. And then, again, I think there's an opportunity to work with the board and partner to have some of those nuanced conversations. So, to me, I think where I could support as a board member is, I really do think that leadership starts with listening. So, I want to understand what people's concerns are, and I think that will start to build the trust and faith where there's the issues with parents are perhaps not feeling engaged can, they'll feel the foundation of that trust being built.
Sean.
I wholeheartedly agree with the statement that Ms. Kuzempel made about policy 5756. I think it was an absolute joke that the government tried to actually enforce that rule, that parents didn't have a say or weren't able to know what's going on in the classroom and in the school environment. At one point, I did ask the board to remove policy 5756. I don't know if this happened, but to me, that was a, that was a slap in the face to the parents. And again, we're supposed to be working for you. So, you need to tell us what you guys want from us, and then we are able to do what we can as board members. And again, that, that policy should not have even ever entered into the school system. I think that was the biggest disgrace to the parents that could have happened.
James.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. What is, in your opinion, regarding the role of parents in their child's education? Do you support policies that strengthen parental involvement in decisions regarding curriculum and reading materials?
So, I'm not, I'm not going to lie. I support the academic professionals who have dedicated their lives and their careers to determining what is age-appropriate for our children to learn at each grade level. I think it is absolutely important and appropriate and much needed to have more engagement from the community on a casual level, more town hall conversations, more, less like formal board meeting kind of engagements where we can't have the back and forth, so we can have that back and forth, so that the leaders of our curriculum can hear what's going on, but then can also explain what is mandated by the state of what we can and what we can't do. And as a board member, my job is to seek to understand, but ultimately, like, I can tell you as a parent, like, I, that's not my subject matter of expertise. It's not what I know best. And so, when our head of curriculum and instruction says, this is what's age-appropriate and this is what kids need to learn, that's what I'm looking for out of public education.
And last, Ben.
Thank you. Parental rights are paramount. Our parents have every right to know what's going on in the schools, to know what the reading lists are, and to be able to opt their student out of some reading list. We have to bring transparency and trust back to our schools, but you also have to have parental engagement. The parents do have to be involved. I'm looking here, we have about 25 people in the audience. We have about 70 people online watching now. That's not very good. We need parents to be more involved and engaged. It's very important to have parental engagement in the student's development. That's paramount. Thank you.
Okay. Ben, this question is for you also. In the past years, protocol has been that the superintendent receive a payout for achievements for the established goals. Do you agree that this payment should be given?
I know there's some issue as to the payment, as to whether or not the goals were met. Unfortunately, I'm not on the board at this time, therefore, I can't make a clear statement as to whether or not those goals were met. However, if they were met, they do need to be paid out. We have some serious issues going on between our superintendent, the board and the schools at this time, and those need to be rectified. We have to start... We have to start next year, the next school board, with a clean slate going forward. We need to put the path behind us. We need to move forward in a solid direction. When I was in the military, the large, the path is always forward. It's not behind, and we need to go forward.
Julie.
I don't believe in merit pay. I think if it's contractual, but if it's contractual, you need to pay it. Elephant in the room, I've been abstaining on that, but that's because I'm conflicted. So if I wasn't conflicted, I'd be voting yes on it because it's contractual, it needs to be paid out. But I don't believe in merit pay. For anyone who's watching that doesn't know what merit pay is, it's over and above someone's salary requirements for their position. I don't think in a district like this, I never would have negotiated that. I don't think it's appropriate to negotiate that in because there were so many people that work in central administration that one person really isn't doing anything on their own. And that's always how previous superintendents that I worked with felt about it. So in general, I'm not for it, but if it's in the contract, that needs to get paid.
Okay.
I'm going to agree. My general understanding is the concept of merit pay came into effect when superintendent salaries were capped, and it was a way to allow individuals to be paid what they thought the market wage was. Coming from private sector, merit pay is pretty common. So again, I'm not necessarily opposed to the basic concept of it. With the situation that we're in now, I think that, you know, there's the concept of SMART goals. So I think there's a learning opportunity here. Contractually, goals were set. If we cannot prove those goals were met, then we are obligated to uphold the contract and to pay those. The learning is to say if we don't like what those goals were or how they were written in order to create ambiguity as to whether or not they were met, then that's an opportunity to set better goals next year. And then obviously, if we don't want merit pay to be included, then the next contract, we negotiate that out.
So we talked a lot about goal-setting and accountability. I think that whether it's the superintendent or any employee in the district, and they've set goals that have been approved by whoever they report to, they've shared their progress, and it can be measured, that we should honor the contract and pay out those merit goals. So I'm happy to agree with the rest that if it's in the contract, we should pay the superintendent, but I would feel the same no matter what employee of the district it impacted.
Yeah, I've been a pretty staunch supporter of contracts and abiding by the contracts. As I've said it before in board meetings, if it's in your contract and you satisfy it, you get paid. There should be no discussion, there should be no vote, there should be, no, we're not doing it. Any other contract that I've ever been a part of or that I've seen, if those goals are met, you get paid for it. Anybody will tell you that. And as far as the merit pay goes, yes. In this particular instance, the goals were, the goals were set. The goals were satisfied per evidence from what I was, you know, told. You get paid. Now, I agree with, I agree with Mr. Mazzati. If contract negotiation comes up for a superintendent for, I forget when his contract's over, we can negotiate that out, we can keep him in. But at the end of the day, like I've always said, if it's in your contract and you satisfy it, you need to be paid. There is no discussion.
Okay, Brandy.
Yes, you have to honor the contract, you have to honor your word. By the back and forth that's been happening, it just makes the public, the community distrust the board. It seems shady. So yes, you have to honor the contract, and like the other members have said, that moving forward, we can then opt not to do a merit pay. That's all.
Okay. Teri, are you familiar with the recent research regarding the impact of early exposure to technology on children? And what is your perspective on continuing the one-on-one iPad initiatives for grades K to 2 that were introduced during the pandemic?
Oof, ask, ask the mom about screen time with little kids. So obviously, with the pandemic, we needed to use technology more so than we would have liked to leverage. I think unfortunately, technology is an important part. We need to teach our kids. My elementary kids are taking tests on computers. I would like the first time they touch a computer to be when they're taking a state exam. I agree, there's probably a pendulum or a middle ground where we need to have a lot less screen time in the classroom and expect it at home and engage more in person and build those skills. So I wasn't aware that there was like some one-to-one requirement, but I think that screens are a tool, it's not the only tool, and it needs to be balanced, and we should listen to the feedback, not only from parents, but also what the teachers are saying about how it's really challenging.
I kind of agree that, you know, early development should be more teacher to student, not screen to student. Again, you know, kids that are young, you know, elementary students, they're sponges. They feed off of everything that they see, they touch, they hear, they smell. A screen doesn't do that. A teacher does that. A teacher greets their child every day, gives them a hug, gives them a high five, you know, does their special handshake. And just in front of the students as well, you know, it, it just, it allows the student to focus on the teacher and what they're trying to teach instead of looking at a screen with multiple, you know, icons and multiple apps open up to where they might not get as strong of an education if it was teacher to student, not iPad to student. So to me, on the elementary level, I think we need to maybe pull back that technology. But I do agree with Ms. Schechter about introducing, you know, technology, maybe late middle school, early high school.
I absolutely disagree with using iPads for elementary school students. It's been shown in numerous studies that the brain-hand-eye coordination is imperative. I can tell you from personal experiences with my own children at the kitchen table, making them write their vocabulary words and sentences over and over and over again until they got it right. You don't learn as well on a computer, especially when your brain is forming. Obviously, technology is important, we have to learn how to utilize it, but it shouldn't be a replacement for education.
Can you repeat the question for me again, please?
Sure. Are you familiar with the recent research regarding the impact of early exposure to technology on children? And what is your perspective on continuing the one-on-one iPad initiative for grades K to 2 that was initiated during the pandemic?
Okay, thank you. So no, I'm not aware of new research with regards to the impact of technology on students. And then with regards to the one-on-one iPad time that came out during the pandemic, like Teri said, it was necessary at that time. I have team members that I've worked with in other countries where they don't have access to that technology, and they are dramatically battling the impacts of having been out of school during that time without that type of technology to support them. So it was better than nothing, but how do we make that transition back? Again, I'm not the expert on that. We have staff members, faculty members, administrators who are. And so I would certainly say that that's something we put to them to say, how do we transition maybe away from that? But then also, how do we make sure that there is a proper transition from the start of school to the end so that our students are prepared for life because technology's not going away?
Early childhood education is basically P to 2. I'm very familiar with that research. I'm an English professor, as I stated, so I read a lot about these types of things. We pulled back the iPads in kindergarten this year. They're not allowed to bring them home, but I would be fine. And I've advocated for zero technology from grade three and under. I don't think there should be any technology in the classroom. Pre-K is play-based, it is interactive, and then they get to kindergarten, and it's vastly different. So I'm not, never was for the one-to-one initiative, which actually started before COVID in this district. But definitely for early childhood ed, it's, early childhood, it's extremely, it's damaging. I think it can be damaging if it's overused. So I know that the district has an effort to reduce that already, which is great. But I just don't feel that it's appropriate.
Brandy.
I've been very loud about this. I'm absolutely against it in elementary school. I just feel like it's such a disservice to our kids, or it should just go back to pen and paper. My son is in first grade, and he can rule the world on his iPad because he can talk into the microphone, he has the autocorrect. But if I were to ask him, you know, "Let's read our sight words", we're struggling. So I'm absolutely against technology unless it's required, maybe for special needs. I know there's children that do use iPad to communicate, but otherwise, no. I think that we can introduce a special, and this way the kids can learn electronics through their special, you know, coding and all the requirements, but absolutely not. And it also would save money for our district.
Okay. Did I get everybody? Yes. Okay. Okay, so we're going to start with James. Going forward, what do you think your responsibility as a school board member will be to understand the line items on the budget and work directly with the business administrator? What do you think your role is?
I appreciate going first, I won't have to ask you to repeat it this time. So I think there's, I'm going to have kind of two answers to this. I have a background in accounting and data and analytics, and I have a spreadsheet at home right now that's got about 700,000 rows of financial data from every district across the state that I'm in the process of analyzing. So for me to say that I, as an individual, would not dig into the data would not be a truthful statement. That's just how I'm wired. That's, that's how things make sense to me. Do I believe that that, however, is the role and responsibility of every board member that sits up here? No, it is not. If you go ask New Jersey School Board Association, if you go and ask other boards, they will tell you it is not the role of the board to go into line item in-depth detail. It is to set the expectations, it is to set the precedent, it is to set the priority for the administration, and then it is to task them with coming up with a budget that satisfies that objective. And if they do not, you do not vote for it, you reject it, you send it back to them to come back to you with one that does.
So I think the most important thing we can do to assist with the budget is by setting those clear goals and having a mission. I've had the benefit in my professional career of making strategic plans, budgetary plans, those future plannings. I've never sat in my role as a consultant or across from, you know, a senior leader who's asked for the line item budget. It's a partnership, whether it's the private sector or, I think, the board. You need to have trust in the facts that are being presented to you and work together to make those tough decisions. So while I appreciate James, that being his wheelhouse, I'm doing my best to do my homework, reading a lot of the financial reporting and trying to understand what I think is a very poorly-named user-friendly budget. But no, I do not anticipate that I would be requiring a ton of RBA's time to go line by line if I'm lucky enough to earn your votes.
Okay, Brandy.
Unpopular opinion, I would like to see the line items. I'm not a finance person, I need to know what I'm voting on. I'm not just voting blindly. I need to understand, and I would want somebody to sit and tell me. You know, because then if I'm, if I get elected, then the following year I won't have to ask that because I already know. So yes, I would want to go line item. Unfortunately, that sucks for the BA, but that's what I would want to do. I need to know what I'm voting for, I'm not voting blindly.
It's a fine line. You have to look at the line items. But you obviously can't go everywhere, everything. The board's mission is to set the agenda, the yearly goals, the five-year goals, the 10-year goals. But you do have to be willing to sit down with your business administrator and go over the lines of each budget. It's, it doesn't have to be in-depth, as in, you know, you want to know the specifics on every single thing. But especially in the cost-cutting environment that we're certainly in at this point and probably will continue to be in for a while, we do need to take a fine look at every budget.
Okay. Julie.
The line item budget is a lot of lines. The user-friendly budget is nowhere close to everything that's in it, I'm sure you know that. And, but I'm more of like a big idea thinker, and 90% of it is contractual costs. So it's salaries and benefits. And so the only way that you can really affect that budget significantly is in the negotiations, you know, process, which I can't be a part of because I'm a member of NJEA. So I have to trust that, what, I really have to put an immense amount of trust in the administration, that what they're presenting to us as the budget is accurate, the cuts they're making, you know, which we really fought against a lot of that this year, that they are appropriate and that things can still get covered after those cuts are made. You never want to cut a person, and sadly, that's been happening lately. But I don't even, a line item budget, I don't even know the usefulness of doing that in this budget.
I think when you talk about a budget, you know, you have to walk a fine line as a board member. I'm taking a little bit of advantage because I was a board member. It's not the board's job to make the, to make the, make the budget. It's up to the administration, the business administrator. They come up with what the budget that they feel is what's best for the district, and then it comes to the board for approval. Granted, we are able to say, hey, we don't want this, we don't want that, we, maybe we can add this, but take that away, yes. That's what we, that's what our role as a board member is. But to talk specifically with the business administrator about the budget, especially line items, you'd spend years, or not years, but you'd spend multiple hours trying to go through every single individual line item in the budget. So in that regard, you must trust, and you must have the trust in your administration to put forth a budget that's both in a budget, for one thing, but also where we don't overstep our bounds as board members.
Julie, how do you see the school board's members' role working with the superintendent and the teaching staff? What do you see your role?
The school board's job is oversight. The superintendent reports to the school board. So that's our only employee. Every other employee in the district reports to the superintendent. So you really shouldn't be getting involved in administering the schools, as they call it, you know, telling people what to do, showing up to the schools unannounced, getting too involved in that building level and union level stuff. You have to be able to talk to your superintendent. It's extremely important to be able to have open and honest conversations, no matter where you lie with your opinions. You know, the superintendent needs to listen and navigate that and build consensus. So that's really our job. A lot, I think a lot of times people think that the board has the ability to control that type of thing, and we really don't, and it's not appropriate for us to do that either.
I agree. It's, we have to be able to work with our superintendent. But we also have to work with the rest of the board. We have to work with our teachers, we have to work with our parents to address the needs that need to be met. We obviously can't go and address everything. The law is, is to that. We can't get involved in personnel decisions within the school district itself. But we have to present the vision going forward, and that's imperative. Thank you.
Brandy.
The superintendent is hired to do a job, and, you know, you have to have faith that he's going to do it. You give him his goals, and, you know, each year you mark where he is or if he found them or he accomplished them. And then you learn from that when you have to hire another superintendent. But everything should filter through him. And that's just the way it's supposed to be set up through the New Jersey School Board Association.
Okay, Sean.
Yeah, I'm going to echo with, with what Brandy just said. We hire a superintendent to do a job, and his job is to bring forth the best as far as personnel, as far as, you know, anything that he wants to do that will better this district. That's what we have, that's what we pay him to do, and we have to trust that that is what he is there to do. Us as board members, yes, at times, yes, we can vote no on things that he's recommended. Is it always the best idea? I'm not a superintendent. I didn't go through everything that, that our current superintendent's gone through as far as education, experience, dealing with multimillion-dollar budgets, dealing with personnel. So that's why he's here. He's doing a job that I can't do. But it's my job to make sure that it's done responsibly. do, but it's my job to make sure that it's done responsibly to a point where if there is something that's on the agenda that I might not like, I can say, hey, whoa, let's take this back, let's try to reassess something and try to find a better solution or a cheaper solution or whatever. But that's what his job is for.
James.
Can you repeat the question?
The question is, how do you see the school board's members' role working with the superintendent and the stu, and the school staff, teaching staff, not just the superintendent, but the teaching staff also?
Yeah, so there's a, we're in very interesting times right now, I think is the part of the answer there, right? It's not unknown to the public that there's a lot of tension between the board, the superintendent, and the union leadership. So my opinion is, you know, there is that clear line of separation, chain of command, all of that sort of stuff. As a board though, we need to be taking a more active role in modeling the behavior, mediating, moderating, building consensus, kindness, and, and really helping everybody come together because I can tell you, my personal belief is that we have a lot more in common than everybody seems to want to realize. Like, everybody has the kid's best interests in heart and we have different ways of trying to go about getting there. And I think it's our job as a board to figure out how to bring that to light.
Terry.
Thank you. So I won't spend much of my time going over the appropriateness of the board and the superintendent's role. What I will say is that I think steady leadership really matters, as does support and collaboration. I think what I intend to bring in the board is that there is a healthy way to have healthy disagreement, right? That's very normal and I think that it's not the disagreement, it's how we speak to one another and be respectful. So I think if we can bring healthy disagreement back, people will feel empowered to be transparent, to discuss the hard truths that they may feel uncomfortable doing so now. And I think that once you get through that difficult period, that's where you build a really strong foundation to support not just the chief school administrator, but all the staff of the district.
James, we're back to you. What do you see as the major issue facing this school district and public education in general?
The major issue facing this school district, there's two of them. It's entirely the goals that I'm running for in a three-year campaign. It's we need to fix the culture in our schools. We want to talk about putting students first and right now, we're running into a brick wall. We're running into a headwind. I'm a runner, so sorry for all the running analogies. But until we can eliminate those obstacles in our way, we are going to constantly be battling ourselves to put the students and what's in their best interest forward. The other big roadblock and barrier is all of the financial insecurity that currently is going on. Every staff member, junior staff member in this organization, whether it's an administrator, a teacher, support staff, every single one of them right now is fearing for their jobs because they don't know what next year's financial crisis is going to be. And so that is the environment they're having to show up to work every day in and how they're educating our teachers. And that's not an environment that they should be in. And so we need to fix those things.
Terry.
I think the greatest challenges facing our district actually aren't within our district. One of the reasons I started coming to school board meetings many years ago is I think our greatest challenges are coming from the outside. I think public education's under attack in many, many ways. One of the things that has inspired me to run for the board is that I see even when people are disagreeing, not respectfully, that there's a lot of passion in this community. And if we can work together to direct that passion in the same direction, I think that, you know, we say a lot about that premier community, I think will not only be a premier community, but an example of what educate, uh, public education could be.
Sean.
I'm gonna pull James Masadi. Could you please repeat the question for me?
Okay, no problem. What do you see as the major issue facing this school district and public education in general?
Well, I'll mirror what Mr. Masadi said. The budget, I mean, we, we've been losing money constantly and it's a constant, you know, thorn in our side about how we're gonna be able to make ends meet. So the financial aspect is, is a huge proponent of, you know, our stress in this district. Also, not having, I'll say what Ms. Checkter said, steady leadership. We, anybody's been following it, you know, five months of no suit, no solid superintendent, no leader at the helm. The, the disc, or I don't even know what to call it, the chaos. While that steady leadership was not here, you saw, you saw what was happening. It wasn't a positive view, it wasn't a positive outlook. So as long as we can keep our, if we can keep our steady leadership, you know, where it needs to be and again, find a way to keep the budget within budget, I think those are our two biggest issues.
Ben.
I took a tour of many South Jersey school districts and the one thing I noticed in most of the districts is the level of professionalism among everybody. The board members, the teachers, the administration, and the parents, everybody polite, respectful. I didn't see one security guard at any of the other board meetings I went to. Quite impressive. But we need to get back to a level of professionalism. I think some of it has to do with the current situations going on within this district, but also a lot of it has to do with COVID. COVID's over. We need to get back to work and the work, again, is teaching our students and making sure they're prepared for their futures.
Randy.
It's trust. Nobody trusts what the board's coming up with. The teachers don't trust the superintendent, the superintendent doesn't trust the board, we don't trust the budget, the parents don't trust, have faith in the district. It's, comes down to trust. Nobody believes each other. We, or you just don't know who to believe, really. So we need to restore that. We need to bring back the faith in here that yes, the board's doing what's right, what's best for the community, for the students. So there's no hidden agendas. We need, it's trust.
Sure.
School finance is the biggest issue for public education. The funding formula in New Jersey is, I wish I had more than a minute to answer this question. I'll try and go as quickly as possible. But we get state funding, that comes from your income tax. We get the local tax levy, which comes from property tax, but it also comes from what's called ratables, which is the businesses that are in your town. And so I've always tried to focus on things that increase the ratables because when the ratables go up, your property tax contribution to the levy goes down. So that's why full-day pre-K, full-day kindergarten, all these things that bring people here, that bring businesses here, anything we can do economic development-wise will help with that because the state aid is just gonna continue to go down. We did meet with our legislators, as I like to do before every single budget season, I'm rushing, and they made it very clear to us that they felt that we had too much administration. We are so bare bones now with administration. They need to make good on their promises that, that, that we will be sort of rewarded when it comes to state funding as it relates to that.
Okay. Randy, what's the best way to address differences of opinion on the board, because you know there are, or between the board and the administration?
All right. So we have the saying in my house, it's, if you can't get what you want, you get what you can. So there's always common ground. I think if you just lead, everyone wants what's best for the kids. I do truly believe that. And I think that if we could all just start putting the differences aside and just finding common ground, then I think that that's the most important thing. Like, we're not go, you're not gonna get everything that you want, but what is best for the students first and foremost, and then just start from there and common ground.
Julie.
Could you repeat the question?
The question is, and we know, what is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board, and we know that there are things on the board that's different, or between the board and the administration?
Well, bringing back committees was very important. There were no committees. I think there are different ways that, I don't know how to exactly put this, but there are different ways that administration, administration's job is to manage the board and the board's job is to deal with administration. So there's, there's always a constant push and pull there. But it's very important for the board members to see each other as people. And something that I've experienced is a lot of people don't see me as a, as a person, as a mom, as a girlfriend to the gentleman in back, as a, as a human being. And that's extremely important. When they didn't have committees, they never interacted. And so doing that, but that, that stuff takes time. And so one of the things I'm proudest of is there were a lot of, there are people that are on the board right now that ran against me, that loathed me, that said horrible things about me. And then we started working together and now they're some of the closest people to me. So I just think it's, it's important to get to know each other as people. We're all have the same goal. That's very important.
It's important that we have professional and open discourse, not only between the board and administration, but between the board. Unfortunately, we've seen over the last few months, that's, doesn't always occur, but it's imperative that this discourse between, you can disagree on many things, but as long as you keep the students first. Our township kids are the most important. We need to adequately make sure that they're educated. And we have to come to consensus. Consensus building is paramount. And as an attorney, that's one of the basics of resolving a case. Everybody is gonna go away a little bit with the skin in the game, basically. And that's imperative to them. Thank you.
Sean.
I think that that's what executive session's for. We were, you know, you, you go into executive session, the public's not privy to it. That's where you should iron out all your problems. As we've seen, you've seen the infighting and to us, to me, that's not what a district should be represented by. We can fight each other tooth and nail behind closed doors, you know, you get, you give a little, get a little, but when it comes out and we have to represent you as the district, I don't think anybody in this audience wants to see screaming matches and, you know, oh, well, you, you know, I don't like this, I don't like that, well, you should have done this. That shouldn't happen here. We're representing the district and you want to look professional, you want to look like we're in control and we look like we're, we know what we're doing. So I think that's what, you know, that's where I feel it's at. Like, executive session, you iron out everything out there. You throw, you, you know, you throw down, you do this, you do that, but when you come out here at the end of the day, this area is to be professional to represent you guys.
Okay, yeah.
So I'll underscore what everyone has shared so far, right? We need to collaborate. But I think what's really important, a piece that's, I haven't heard yet, is that we need that collaboration to lead to action, right? So yes, everyone needs to feel heard, but we need to make progress in the district. And I think that's the frustration we hear not only up here on the dais, but from parents and educators, right, is that we need to feel as though we're actually accomplishing things when we're spending our time here. So I think my advice or how I would conduct myself is a little bit of a goldfish mentality. I'll say my piece, I vote my one vote, and then I think we have to move on to the next thing. There's a lot of long storied histories up here, a lot of long tenure and dedication to the district, which is certainly important and appreciated, but I think that would help us progress in a way that, and the speed at which I think we need to.
Last person.
Can you repeat the question?
Okay. What's the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and the administration?
So I've, I've spoken about the book, The Five Dysfunctions of a Team by Patrick Lencioni, and the basic premise behind that is you can't accomplish anything as a team, as an organization, without first having trust. And so I think that's one of the things that, you know, this, I personally was very happy at, I was very pleased, I guess is the right word to say, last night, finally being able to release a lot of the tension that the current board was, was facing because they can now actually start working towards building trust amongst each other. You know, the administration, they can start building trust. I think that is the number one thing that needs to happen. We have a lot of passionate people in this town, on this board, in our administration staff, all that sort of stuff. That passion's gonna come out. And Open Public Meetings Act says that we don't get to have those conversations behind closed doors. They have to happen out here in front of the public. Being able to have them with passion, but with respect, is something that I think we could be working on.
Okay. Terry, it's a long one. What is your perspective on, one, the value of student learning, social skills, and emotional regulation skills, and the importance of staff whose role is directly related to addressing those social and emotional needs of the students?
Great question. That's how I start when I'm buying myself a second. So social emotional learning is, is essential, right? We, I think we've seen some opportunities for board and public members to have had a little bit more social emotional learning education early on. It's vitally important as we prepare our students not just to pass tests in the classroom, but be good citizens out in the world and to really build a foundation of a happy and healthy life going forward. I think that's how we build not just good students, good people, good citizens, and good community members.
James.
So my seven-year-old struggles with emotional regulation. She is probably the poster child for, you know, if she had not been in an inclusion classroom last year and she had two amazing teachers in kindergarten to help her better cope with her, you know, emotional, emotional learning, you know, I, I, this is one of those things that I see firsthand. I understand the challenges and the difficulties teachers have with children like my daughter. She wants to be super helpful, but on a flip of a switch, she will just go from zero to a thousand and, and we can't figure out why we're getting outside help, all of that. It is very difficult for teachers. We've been working for years to try to find the answer, you know, to help her. All I can do as a parent, all I can do as, as a board member, is to listen to the teachers and to ask what would make this easier? How can we help? How can we support you deal with this? Because I don't think it's going away or going to get easier. We just need to figure out how we best support them.
Ben.
Obviously, we're gonna have, need to have emotional support and regulation for our special needs students. But for our students who don't have those special education needs, discipline is important. Discipline has been sorely lacking in our schools for quite some time now. We need to get back to requiring students to meet their standards. It's just as important for the student to have consequences as a result that are actions. Unfortunately, it appears that a lot of times they're not, but we need to bring back consequences for the students so they can learn. If you get outside of school, you know, it's not a pretty picture, but kids in school can do activities in which they don't face serious consequences. Now, it's a learning opportunity for all kids and you have to manage that, but we do need to have discipline in schools and that's imperative to the learning process. Thank you.
Sean.
I'll piggyback off my statement about the, about the technology at the elementary level. I do believe that needs to be transitioned away because again, the elementary is the, is the, is a development of, into an adult. And I believe with more teacher interaction, less screen time, they can actually develop better with a teacher and, you know, look, you do wrong, you should be punished. So again, I will say that lowering the screen time for elementary and possibly middle school, I think, and going back to a teacher-to-student would definitely help in that regard. And I'll agree with, with Mr. Smith, discipline's gone. I mean, I know when I was in high school, I'll say it, 20 years ago, that you got into a fight, you were expelled. You didn't get a slap on the wrist, you didn't get in school, in-school suspension. You were gone. And I think I maybe experienced two fights in my whole high school career. So I do believe that discipline does need to come back.
Randy.
Can you repeat it, please?
The question is, what's your perspective on the value of students' learning, social skills, and emotional regulation skills, and the importance of staff whose role is directly related to addressing those social and emotional needs?
So it's very important for the staffs and I would love to speak with staffs and understand, like, what is it, is there something that we can do, like, come up with maybe a plan, like, ask the majority of them, how is this affecting you? What is your biggest hurdle? What are some things that... What are some things that the district can do? Obviously, when it comes to money, we're in a crisis right now, but maybe there's some other things that we can provide and help with teachers to figure out how we can work with the students that are having these issues. I also do believe that discipline is a factor. I mean, you know, kids are not held accountable. And I think maybe that is also parents, too. They don't, oh, my kid can never do this. Well, you know, there has to be accountability. And that goes for everyone, to be honest.
We need more guidance counselors. That's the bottom line. All of our SAC counselors are gone. We used to have six. I was so proud of that. I don't think we have any anymore. For a school, an elementary school that has 600 kids, to have one guidance counselor is just shameful. It is their job to do exactly what the question asked, to provide those large classes, but also to be there, you know, I'll tell a personal story, hope my son doesn't get embarrassed, but my son Kevin, when he graduated from Wedgwood, they asked who, they asked him, you know, who was your most influential person in the school? And he said, Mrs. White. That was the guidance counselor, because I was getting divorced, and he was in the program there called FISH, Family in Separate Houses. And they didn't have that at the other schools, I don't think, at the time, but those types of programs are memorable for kids, it helps them regulate. And the best thing about that program was he was able to hear from other kids that were in that situation, and that helped him, and I think allowed him to regulate more quickly than my older kids. So we need more guidance counselors, is the bottom line.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions that we had this evening. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to do a closing statement in random order that they've chosen. The time people will give you a 15-second warning. The first person is James.
I just want to thank everybody up here on the dais. It's not easy to, you know, want to put yourself out there. There's a lot of comments publicly, online, there's, you know, people have an opinion when you put yourself up here. And it's not easy. And there's a lot of passionate people in this community, and I wish more people would get involved, you know, in the process, right? Get more people at the school board meetings. I think we need more involvement from the public, again, in, you know, conversations, right? Not sitting in the board meetings, per se, but actual, like, group conversations where there's back-and-forth dialogue, where we can engage. So I just, again, I don't have much to say other than I really appreciate everybody up here and everything that you're doing as part of this process. And thank you for everybody who put this event together, and I'll see y'all next Wednesday at the other event.
Ben.
I think that it's important that we look forward, not backward. It's time for us as a district to move forward. We have some challenging times ahead of us, that's for sure. But we're only going to do that and be successful with consensus. I think that we just have to become more professional in how we handle these things. Professionalism among the board, between their discourse with each other, between the discourse with the parents, with the parents' discourse with the board, and also with the administration, and even the teachers through the union. Thank you.
Sean.
As I've stated before, I mean, I'm up here for two reasons. I want to bring the public trust back, and I'm going to try to see what I can do about trying to at least plant the seed to try to bring trades back. I ran on that before, and I truly believe that there is more option out there and one more pathway than just college. You know, I don't know how I'm going to do it. All I can do is speak on it and see what the superintendent can probably put together. Maybe we can get an elementary program started, not on the elementary level, but a basic course on carpentry, electrical, HVAC, boilermaker, welder, you know, you name it. But public trust has been decimated. And I think that, you know, if I'm fortunate enough to get your vote, I will fight to make, I will make sure the public trust comes back to this board, because again, we represent you. If you can't trust us, we're not going to be able to do anything. And again, try to bring the trades back.
Julie.
I want to thank you for the new format. I feel like this format is slightly different from the previous five times I did this, and we were able to, it's hard to get in the one minute, but we went over more topics. So I appreciate that. And I appreciate everyone coming out here on a Wednesday night to listen to us, and everyone at home, and for the Legal Women Voters in the President's Council. I think this is always a great event. But there are a lot of things that I wish I had more time to talk about. There's another Meet the Candidates next week, next Wednesday, I should know the time. 5:30 at the Senior Center. And that one, you can sit at a table with us and kind of converse a little bit more. Like I said, it's really important to get to know people. I hope that we all get to know each other a little bit more at that event as well. And thank you.
Terry.
For me, serving on the school board is about more than just policies and budget. It's about stewardship, about earning the community's trust, and about protecting the future that we share. It's about making the most of the few short years we have to give our kids all the tools they need to succeed. I bring experience in local governance, budgeting and leadership, but more importantly, I bring a track record of collaboration, accountability, and service. When I look at our schools, I see dedicated teachers, staff, and families who give so much every day. I'm running because I really believe it's my opportunity to help, to make thoughtful, transparent decisions in the best interest of the whole community. I won't have every answer, but I'll always listen, learn, and lead with honesty and respect. That's what leadership, that listens, really means to me. So again, I'm Terry Schechter. I'd be honored to earn your vote and your support on November 4th. Thanks.
So I feel like I didn't get to convey how passionate I am tonight. I just, my nerves get the best of me. I'm not a public speaker. I, you know, I wish there was more time. But I want school to be more fun for our kids, especially our elementary. We need more, like, color and more hands-on. We, I would love for our district to be a place for our kids to love and for our teachers to love, you know. Again, like I said, I'm not a politician, I'm not a polished speaker, so blame my brain, not my heart. But this is like a job interview, and, you know, it's nerve-wracking. But my intentions are good, and I really do think I can make a difference. I've, anybody that's had, or I had the pleasure to engage with the teachers or staff, they see how passionate I am. I love our community. And last night with the councilman coming out to my son's game, that was even more special, too. It's like, I just love how they were looking at the councilman and the mayor, and I'd want to do that for our schools. I just, I'm very passionate about it, and I just hope to have your vote.
Thank you.
However, you can meet us at the Candidates next week.
Thank you all. The Legal Women Voters of Burlington County and the Washington Township President's Council extends their sincere gratitude to the count, to all the candidates for participating in this forum, to the audience members that came out this evening, and to the audience online. We hope that this allows you to be better informed for you for the election coming up. Remember to vote on Election Day, Tuesday, no number four, or mail-in ballots, or in-person early voting, October 25th through Sunday, November 2nd. Thank you, and please encourage your friends and neighbors to vote as well. Everyone, have a good evening. Thank you.